If I can have your attention, we're going to have the invocation at this time. And I'll call on Reverend Stephen Bazaz of the First Methodist Church here in Washington.
Let us pray. Most merciful and generous Father, this evening we pray for your presence to bless this sacred chamber as we gather. Send your heavenly blessings upon this county as it and all its citizens dwell together as part of your holy realm. Keep far from us all self-will and discord. Indue your servants here gathered with righteousness that they may discharge their duties with humility and faithfulness. Keep these commissioners and officials in your eternal care. Protect them from outside influences that may invade their personal desires or agendas so that they may remain true to the ministry you have called them to as servants of this beautiful community. Grant to us all that we may receive their ministrations so that we may hear from them your will for our lives, that by our words and deeds together we may seek your glory and the advancement of your holy kingdom. Teach us, O God of every nation, to see every question of political policy in the light of our faith. Look graciously, O Lord, upon this land. Where it is in pride, subdue it; where it is in error, rectify it; where it is in need, supply it; where it is in default, restore it; and where it holds to that which is just and compassionate, support it. For we offer our prayers to you in the name of the one and only Lord Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call the June Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And at this time, I'll ask that you stand, and we'll have the pledge led by Vice Chair Langley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask that you make sure that your phone is turned off completely. At this time, I'll recognize anyone that has a conflict of interest as it relates to tonight's agenda. Hearing none, we'll move to approve the agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor of the agenda, please raise your right hand. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have items for presentation, and we're going to start with the Governor's Volunteer Service Awards. And I'll turn it over to you, Jessica. Or to both of you.
Well, good evening. I'm Jessica Burnham, the Executive Director of the Beaufort Heart Partnership for Children, and I'm also the Coordinator for the Governor's Service Volunteer Award here for Beaufort County. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity this evening to shine the spotlight on some very special people right here in Beaufort County. I'm here today to present the 2023 Governor's Volunteer Service Award and the Governor's Medallion Award for volunteer service to several well-deserved citizens of Beaufort County who are making a difference right here in the community every day. Our local heroes often go unnoticed as they quietly serve within our communities. Today, we are honored to recognize four of those heroes and to thank them for their tireless efforts that they give each and every day. As we highlight the intensive volunteer work of the recipients, please know that this is just a little tip of the iceberg of what they do. I have so much more to share about these individuals, but for time's sake, we will reference just a few of the many ways they serve and they changed the world for the better. First of all, let me begin to explain to you what the Volunteer Service Governor Award really is. It honors the true spirit of volunteering in each and every community across the state of North Carolina by recognizing individuals and groups that make a significant contribution to their community through volunteer service. Each year, nominations are sought for outstanding volunteers in every community. Nominations are made, then reviewed on a local level, and then sent to the state level where the awards are determined. Our first recipient tonight is Barbara Jones. So I would like to ask Barbara Jones to please come up. Barbara Jones is a resident of the Aurora community. Nominator Rhonda Stalling shared that any time there is a need in the community, Barbara is coordinating helping and collecting necessary items and resources. Barbara gathers information and distributes the Aurora community newsletter, organize the Veterans Breakfast, and assists with community parades and Christmas decorations for the town of Aurora. As a retired teacher, she is still actively involved as a volunteer at the school events and also serves as a student advocate while spearheading the local Box Tops for Education and Cope Rewards programs benefiting the Snowden Elementary School. In addition, Barbara also has a heart for animals in need of homes and spends many hours trapping feral cats, having them spayed and neutered, chipped, and given necessary shots. She then sees that they are adopted into happy homes. Barbara is making a difference every day. It is our pleasure to recognize Barbara Jones as a recipient of the Governor's Volunteer Service Award for 2023.
Don't send me your cats. I was there last week.
Thank you. We are. We're going to take pictures at the end. Okay, our next recipient is Loretta and Riley Younger. If I could ask Loretta to come forward. Ms. Loretta is a resident of the PNT community. The Youngers have been very involved in advocating for senior citizens and assuring that they have access to health care and resources. Their involvement in the Committee of Aging, the Senior Care Exercise Program, Beaufort County Heal Program, and other grassroots initiatives, the Youngers collaborate to reach marginalized populations with information services for the healthy eating and active living. Their nominator Andrew Schonning showed that Loretta and Riley Younger are a team, and one of their most valuable contributions is how they inspire and organize the service of others in the community. They bring people together to work for the better outcome of the community. It is our pleasure to recognize Loretta and Riley Younger as a recipient of the Governor's Service Award for 2023 for their outstanding volunteerism in the community. And Ms. Younger would like to say just a couple of words.
Yes. I just wanted to say that I'm accepting this award, and it's really a huge honor for me and my husband, Riley Younger, because where you see one, the other one is a step behind. Thank you so much.
Okay, and finally, it's my pleasure to recognize Kurt Ryan, a resident of the Aurora community, as the recipient of the 2023 Governor's Medallion Award for the volunteer service. So if I could ask Kurt to come up at this time? So this award was actually implemented back in 2006 in the state of North Carolina to recognize the top 20 to 25 volunteers in the state of North Carolina based on the review and evaluation of a statewide panel. Medallion Award recipients are honored at an annual recognized ceremony. However, Kurt was unable to attend that due to a collaboration presentation he already scheduled. So we are honored tonight to have the opportunity to present him with the medallion today. But before I do that, let me share a couple of his extraordinary services that he gave back in the Aurora community. Kurt Ryan has devoted thousands of hours to revive the Aurora Richlands Township community since his retirement from the Army in June of 2021. From working with the town, county, state, federal leaders, and establishing a number of citizen-led committees to identify critical needs, to the development of the town of Aurora's first strategic plan, he is leading and guiding the work that is resulting in visible forward movement. Though his work, veterans have been honored with the Local Hometown Heroes Initiative. Steps are underway to develop an industrial park. Infrastructures updated are also in motion along with collaboration efforts to improve broadband services as a foundation, not for educational purposes, but also for business purposes. Additionally, Kurt has worked hands-on in several capacities from physically cleaning, painting, clearing hurricane damaged structures throughout the town, and rallying others to assist to clean, repair, and replacing equipment at Camp Bodie Seabase for the Boy Scouts. Mr. Ryan's actions continue to embody his lifelong statement of service before self and has resulted in tangible progress towards the town revitalization. It is a pleasure to recognize Kurt Ryan as a recipient of the Governor's Medallion Award for volunteer service of 2023. And if we could just have our recipients come up so we can take a photo?
While you're coming up, congratulations to each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you again for this opportunity to honor our volunteers and the heroes among us. I look forward to returning next year, and if you guys will just, one more time, give a round of applause for our volunteers and their service.
Thank you, Jessica. Dolores? And Sheriff Hammond, if you'll come up, I think you have two of these, two employees.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I would like to acknowledge some Beaufort County employees for their service to Beaufort County. I'd first like to acknowledge Wesley Waters, who has now 15 years with the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office, yeah. So Captain Waters has been called off, so he will not be here representing, if I may accept that on his behalf.
Next, I'd like to acknowledge Seth Barrow with five years of service from the Sheriff's Office.
Deputy Barrow, Sergeant Barrow is on vacation. He was pre-scheduled on vacation.
Next, I would like to acknowledge, sorry, Ms. Amy Hardy, who has 10 years with the Department of Social Services. She is here. Then we have two other employees that deserve recognition. Ms. Sheila Sals with 20 years of service with the Health Department, and she could not be here tonight. So congratulations to Sheila. And then we have Jennifer Bradshaw with the HR Department, who could not be here, and she now has five years of service with Beaufort County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is Commissioner Hood Richardson.
Okay, this is a motion when it's over with. Beaufort County government is wealthy. We have more than $25 million in savings and a much better-than-average property valuation because of our waterfront properties and the multi-billion-dollar phosphate mining operations. Commissioners removed $5.4 million from the savings and deposited it into a special capital spending ordinance this year without stating the purpose for the use of the money. That is still savings. We increased the community college funds and gave the school board an increase of more than $1.7 million. We funded the continuation budget and increased proposed spending by $2.5 billion, $1 million, within the past week. It is likely the board will increase spending tonight. Tax revenues are increasing at more than 10% at an annual rate. Many of our families are having hard times for the same reasons the county revenues are increasing. That is inflation. My motion is that we show compassion to the people who earn our tax money by reducing the adverum taxes by five cents to a rate of 58.5 cents this year. This will cost about $3.5 million and can easily come from the fund balance. That's not much money when you consider the amount of money that we're piling up, and we've increased spending this year by $8 million. So $3.5 million is not much when you consider rolling it back to our citizens. That's a motion.
I'd like to second that motion because I feel that that reduction, that give back to the citizens of Beaufort County is a good start. Maybe next year, we can do better.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to reduce taxes. Is there further discussion before we take a vote? Yes. John?
I think it's important, and Hood's right, we put 5 point, what was it?
Six.
5.6 million. 5.6 in the capital reserves. There's a reason for that. Over the course of the next five years, we have an obligation of close to $17 million in capital expenses that we're going to come due. In addition to that, we have almost $20 million in capital expenses that are going to come due to the school facilities, of which we own and responsible for. That doesn't include the community college. So like all of us, we know that when, over a course of time, when buildings get old, roofs have to be replaced, air conditioning systems have to be replaced, heating systems have to be replaced. All of that has to be done if you're going to maintain buildings for those people that use them, which are the citizens of Beaufort County in most cases. So I think it would be inappropriate, and it would be certainly irresponsible business, to reduce taxes just to turn around a year or two from now and have to raise them in order to meet our obligations. And therefore, I don't see any way in the world I'd vote for this.
Any other comments? Vice Chair Langley?
And I think I've said this for a number of years. We live in a hurricane-prone area. And the thing about FEMA is FEMA reimburs, they don't give you money upfront. So whatever disaster comes to Beaufort County, we have to be able to respond upfront and wait for FEMA to reimburse us. So why would we give away the money, and then when a hurricane comes, everybody's looking to the county to do things, but we don't have the funding? So I cannot go along with this.
Commissioner Walker?
I think we worked hard on the budget. If you watched it on TV, you saw that we did, you know, look over things pretty different. It was, you know, difficult cuts, and we added things, and we did spend some money. In business, I always said you got to spend money to make money, and I think that applies here, too. I put this cut to my personal tax bill, and it was less than $50. So I'm more than happy to leave it like it is and let that money apply to where we spent it. I think we spent it wisely. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I'd like to respond.
Okay.
Okay, we're not in the money-making business, first of all. We're in the taxing business. That means we take wealth away from the citizens of this county and we use it. When we take more wealth away from our citizens than is necessary for us to run the government, we are overtaxing our citizens, and we are not treating them fairly. The items that have been mentioned here, like the total of $40 million in these funds, a lot of that is pie in the sky, and what someone who really loves to spend money thinks we need to be buying. The maintenance and repairs for the ongoing operations in the school system and the county are already built into our budget. So it is puzzling to me that we have commissioners sitting up here who are representing hard-working people in Beaufort County who are digging in their pocket to pay taxes, and they don't want to give the money back to them when they take more than they're supposed to take. It is true, the county can do two things if it were in a financial bind. We have good enough credit, we can go to the bank and borrow money without a problem. We also can raise taxes at any time that we want to. It, good government, historically, has always been a matter of only taxing the bare minimum that you need to run the government and giving the rest of it back to the people. It is an oppressive movement when government suddenly decides that they have the right to use a crystal ball to look into the future and tell you that they're going to need $40 million in the next four or five years. How can they do that? They certainly have a lot better judgment than I have. So we need to give this money back to the people who earned it.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
I haven't spoken.
It's a wide berth between having a big booming government, a booming economy, and starving of government. Now, some people would argue the starving of government works, and it works because it makes government lean and makes government think tremendously before they use the people's money in a poor manner. And we find a lot of times, when you grow government, when you make it big, you have everything you need. You have more employees than you need. You're not tight. You're not responsive. You're not nimble to what needs to be done in times when we have a recession. Now, we could have a recession at any time, and if it's a doozy of a recession, what are you going to do? We've raised spending tremendously over the last three years. 8%, 10%. What are we, 11%, 12% this year, raising spending?
Four.
Four?
Four percent.
Okay. Does that include the 5.6 million that you're putting over?
No, no. That's already been put over there.
Oh, that's a matter of semantics.
It's a matter of who's keeping the books.
So you keep raising spending. If we have a situation where we have a recession, what are we going to do? We're going to raise taxes, or we're going to start laying people off? So I think we need to start looking at, how would you treat this government if it was your business, if it was your family budget? And we don't do a good job in that respect. At some point, we're going to have to start looking at it that way. And I think this year's as good a year as any.
Well, I'm going to summarize it by saying that, you know, it makes excellent financial sense to put money into a capital reserve fund to fund future capital expenses. I mean, it makes good personal sense, and it makes good business sense, and for God's sake, it makes good government sense. And we're looking at a $2.5 million request from the school system for technology for a four-year period. We're looking at $6 million estimated cost for two mega solid waysite, and then we keep kicking around the sheriff's office, doing something at the sheriff's office, as well as the 911 center, and eventually doing something with the jail. So there are future needs, and, you know, you can either finance them or you can put money off to the side. I heard the commissioners say we kept putting money to the side when it came for the Board of Election. They requested us to put money forward. New voting machines, best thing we ever did. I mean, when it was time to replace them, we had the cash. So anyway, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Those opposed.
I'm opposed.
Did you get that, Katie?
Yes.
I was looking at it.
You guys need to do more training in the back room.
Where's the back room?
Okay, guys, we're going to move into the public hearing. Need a motion to go into the public hearing on the budget.
Motion to approve going into the public hearing.
And we have a second. All those in favor of the public hearing, raise your right hand. All right, turn it over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the public hearing that is required by the North Carolina Budget and Physical Control Act. Every local government is required to hold a public hearing before you adopt the budget. You were presented, let me back up, you've got three, you have three documents in front of you. First is the manager's recommended budget, final recommended budget, or budget message. So this is the document that essentially, you'll recall that when we presented our recommended budget to the board on May 15th, it was the overall budget. Since then, you've had budget workshops, you've made adjustments, you've added some things, you've taken some things out, you've adjusted the continuation budget. So this document is a summary of all those activities that have occurred during the budget workshops to show you exactly where things were. The next piece you have is the budget ordinance, and that is the legal document for which the board appropriates its funds and spends its money. This is the document that we go by when we are dealing with funds and spending funds. I will tell you that because of the general statute that does not allow a commissioner who serves on a board to vote to appropriate funds to that board, you have the budget amendment, or you have the budget ordinance, and then you also have a budget amendment that's attached with it. So after hearing public comments, if you so choose to adopt the budget, we would ask that you adopt, the whole board has the ability to adopt the budget ordinance, because we have taken out the funding for BHM Library, and we've taken out the funding for Greenlamp. And the reason we did that was because Vice Chairman Langley serves on those boards, and he cannot by law vote on that budget if it's appropriating money to a board he sits on. So we've taken those out of the main budget. So the main budget then allows the entire board to vote on this budget, which is appropriate. Then we would ask you, if you so choose to move forward, then we would present you the budget ordinance, the budget amendment, excuse me, that would then fund BHM Library and Greenlamp, and Vice Chairman Langley would have to recuse himself from that vote. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. This is a public hearing for the public to make comments on the changes that you have made to the budget and for anything that they'd like to tell you about it.
Any questions or comments before we open it up to the public for public comment? If not, the first one that has registered is Patricia. Yes, this is a public hearing related to the budget, so three-minute limit.
All right. Good evening. During this economic time of recession and the highest inflation we've had in 40 years, it appears that the taxpaying citizens of Beaufort County are having to tighten their belts, but it does not appear that the government is tightening its belt. Private companies are not giving their employees raises. Main Street USA is not buying new vehicles or increasing benefits. There's more than $25 million in the county savings account, but none of that money is being used in the proposed budget. If I understand correctly, the state requires approximately an 8% or $6 million to be in savings. Approximately $5.4 million was taken out of the savings account and deposited into capital projects fund. This money is set in stone and cannot be transferred into other accounts. This money was removed from the savings fund to make it look like a tax refund is not justified. What is that $4.4 million being designated for, and does the 2023 budget include more capital project funding? The school budget is increased by $1.7 million, although the school student population continues to shrink. Spending has been increased by approximately $2.5 million beyond the continuation budget. Is that all it's going to increase, or can we expect another increase during tonight's meeting? As a taxpaying citizen, I'm asking that taxes be reduced by 10%, which is approximately is approximately a 4.5 million dollars. This is not giving away money. Putting that money back into the hands of the working-class taxpaying citizen is the right thing to do. Families need this money more than the government does, plus that money will circulate throughout the economy multiple times. The greatest asset that Beaufort County has is the private citizen, the working-class American, Main Street USA, and the private corporation that drives the economy.
Thank you. Scarlett?
My name is Scarlett Stokes and I'm here to represent the Chalkwendy Recreation Department in the town of Chalkwendy and to thank you for your generosity and support of this budget and to let you know that finally since COVID, we're having a great rebuilding year at the town of Chalkwendy and our rec programs and that again this year, from T-ball to softball, we're enhanced our programs to almost 10 out of 12 months out of the year. Your generosity allows our department to provide these programs, build their teamwork skills and camaraderie among all the ages and with us being able to keep the lights on 10 months out of that year, that continues to enhance us and continues to encourage us with your support and I thank you.
Thank you. That's the only two that we had registered. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak?
Motion to close the hearing.
Okay, we've got a motion to close the public hearing and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, so we're out of the public hearing. What's the wishes of the board as it relates to the budget?
Part of clarification.
Yes.
Mr. Manager, I also sit on the Boys and Girls Club Board. As, I mean, that's not an expanded fund, do I need to accuse myself of voting for the budget when it comes to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
So give us just one second. Is that the advisory board, is that the governing board?
The governing board.
Did that change? I thought you were on the local advisory board. Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Manager, I hate to do it to you again, but I serve on the Trillium Board of Directors.
I checked with Trillium and Trillium because it is a state mandated piece, we got their attorney to look at that, sent us an note and said that that does not qualify at Trillium. So we knew that one and it checked on that one. I apologize, Commissioner, if I was...
No problem.
If y'all, Mr. Chairman, if you want to move on to keep the meeting flowing, we'll work through this.
Okay, why don't I open it up for discussion with the commissioners? Is that okay?
Yeah.
To stay on the budget stuff?
Yeah.
While they work at the amount of money that needs to come out of the budget ordinance.
Sorry.
Your time's up.
Okay. Comments as it relates to the budget from any of the commissioners? This is your chance to speak up?
Oh, I'll come in. Are you going to come in?
I think if anybody goes back and looks through the videos of the four budget sessions that we had, you'll find that we went through this in great detail. We have met the needs of the county. The whole discussion about saving money for future needs is something that is absolutely ingrained in good physical responsibility and I think that we are doing and meeting the needs and the wants of the community. The people I talk to don't want their taxes going roller coasters. They do want you to have money so that when you do have, if you happen to have a recession, you've got something to fall back on and you don't have to raise taxes. So I think that we have done the right thing for the people of this county and we're providing the right services for what they want.
Commissioner Richardson? Well, I'm not voting for a budget that makes government larger, takes advantage of people, that fails to recognize that it's the people that provide the money and the people that deserve, when they're overtaxed, they deserve having that money returned to them. I take great issue with what the commissioner next to me just said. We didn't go over this budget in detail. He should have been here 15 years ago when we actually went over budgets in detail. This budget's done for the most part in the back room. Proof of that is that the school board never appeared before the commissioners in an adversarial situation to review their budget. The simple truth is when you do a continuation budget, there's fifteen million dollars in round numbers there that nobody on this board can tell you what it's being spent for and yet we have some really serious problems in the schools, we have problems with discipline, we have problems with what's being taught in the schools, we're buying canned programs at a half a million dollars a pop for teachers that if they're competent can teach the subject without having a program that indoctrinates students into a lot of the modern woke feelings, beliefs. So that, the community college never came before this board in the same manner that I just accused the school board of, to answer questions from this board about where their money is going. So for commissioners to sit up here and say that we examined this budget in detail is a farce that is beyond belief when I've served on this board for 26 years and when we did go over this budget in detail. There is a group, a clique on this board that controls this board from the back room, controls this budget from the back room, I just proved it to you, and we need to go back to examining budgets. When you do a continuation budget, what you're saying is whatever's wrong with last year's budget, we're going to continue to finance this year. We don't examine the budget objectively and I'm not voting for it. Randy?
We met joint meeting with the Board of Education and they presented their budget. I asked superintendent to come, our last budget workshop meeting night, to be available for questions. The only question he got was about the contract from Bath, you know, Bath Recreation. So he was here ready, prepared to answer any questions and none was asked of it. You know, this is my second or second budget that I've voted on, but I've been here for 20-some years and I can remember budget public comment times at, over at the courthouse. We had to have it at the courthouse because people were lined out the door to, you know, complain. We had a problem. When you have, and I've always said to myself, when you have a public comment period and you only have two people, you must have a pretty good budget. So I got no problem with it. I know you can always cut, but I just don't think that's the thing to do for this. Thanks.
Ed?
First of all, I want to thank the manager and the finance officer for putting together a pretty good budget and we had plenty of discussions about this budget for me to make my decision, but let me put the truth out here. The biggest item that's in this budget increase is for our employees. Guess who made the recommendation to do the study? Answer it. Mr. Richardson made the recommendation to do the study. At that time, I told him, if you can upset the employees, let's go ahead and give them what the money is or let's don't do the study. He hemmed and hawed and hemmed and hawed. Any employee that works 12 months out of the year deserves a raise. I don't care what it is. If you think, if you think a loaf of bread the same this year as it was last year, then you're not having a dream, you're having a nightmare. And if you think two point, whatever it costs to support our employees is a farce and I'm ready to walk in the forest because I'm going to vote for this budget. And I told you three months ago, I was going to vote for to give them their money and that is the only reason that I'm going to vote for this budget is because I promised that I was going to give them the money that this study required.
Commissioner Langley? Well, and I just want people to understand that any commissioner on this board, if he needs a question answered during our budget process, all they have to do is ask the manager, ask anybody on staff to have that individual to come and ask the questions. And I have yet to see folk who say, well, no, I'm not going to come and answer your questions. So that is not, that is not a valid excuse to say that we didn't do our budget properly. It is also important that people understand county government is attached to people and a county is only as good as its people are. If you have happy employees, they will do an even greater job than what they're doing now. Because I will, I'll be perfectly honest with you, all the employees that I've encountered, they have been really good at what they're doing. So we don't reward people for bad behavior, but you reward people for good behavior and for great behavior. So this is a very, very good budget and wherever this back room is that Commissioner Richardson is always saying that the deals are made, I've never been in it. Stan?
Yeah, I'm not going to vote for this. You guys admit to a 4% increase and I'm going to throw that 5.6 million in. I mean, we're talking about a new jail, we're talking about 2.5 million going for technology going to the schools and with the shrinking student population and this is all planned out for the future, but it's money that's going to be set aside that cannot be given back to the taxpayers. Now, I'm taxpayer-centric. We talked, Randy, you talked about the time they were lined up 100 deep to discuss things. That's going to happen again because we're not managing the store. This year, we're giving more money, far more money to charities than we ever have and I came to you guys and I told you, there's going to be a problem. We still have not addressed that general statute with an opinion from our staff. Now, an opinion given here on camera is what I want. I don't want blogs that were written by the person that said that we got a problem here 13 years ago. Things change in 13 years. I want an opinion from our staff and we didn't get it and I've been asking for it for about six months. So that's a question I asked and I got no answer and I ask it in public. So you guys don't want to talk about that, you want to give these charities money. There's a problem, it's going to be on you, all of you that voted for this budget. Now, okay, that's fine. I shall continue since I have the floor. We're talking more money every year and we have, we still are in a flutter from the COVID days when people had money they shouldn't have had, they're out spending money, we've never had this level of tax, sales tax money come in. That's going to end when we have this recession, that is going to come at some point and it's going to be a doozy of a recession. And when we're not getting those tax dollars, when people are not able to pay for their taxes because they keep going up higher and higher and higher on the rates that we charge and evaluations are going to go up, we know that's going to happen. And that's, and you guys think that's going to be a windfall when the evaluations go up. Revenue neutral never has been a real issue in this county. I mean, we keep saying revenue neutral, revenue neutral, we keep raising spending and eventually when the revenue stops coming in, you're either going to have to cut taxes, I mean, raise taxes or you're going to have to fire people. So I'm not going to vote for this because I think you're not looking ahead, you're not looking towards the future. And we see a dark days ahead economically and you're not prepared because you're not keeping the money in the community, you're taking it and you're using it as you wish.
Okay, I made some remarks and I'm going to try not to mention anything that's already been said, but I want to make sure that I clarify some of the things. Our tax rate of 62 and a half remains the same. It is the 19th lowest in the state of North Carolina based on the sales ratio. The next county adjacent to us is Pamlico County and they rank number 36. Our expansion budget went up, it's being increased a total of 2.1 million dollars and 92% of that relates to the pay study plus for the first time, we're adding dental insurance. We have to make sure that we're competitive in the marketplace. We've got a turnover rate of 15%. The total budget of 72 million is an increase of 4.2%. Let's talk about the schools. You know, we're told that we didn't have, we don't know what the money's going for. Here's a line items from the request. They asked for salaries and benefits to go up, that's $308,000. They ask us to fund the bus drivers that went up during COVID in order to make sure they didn't lose any, that total figure's 364,000. They asked us to cover the utility cost increase, that's $176,956. They asked us to cover the facility use study, which was a request from the commissioners during our joint session. They asked us to increase the athletic directors, increase that to 11-month position, that's was $56,293. They asked us to increase the coaching salaries for all of the schools, that's an increase of 60,810. So the current expense went up 991,000 for the schools. Now, on the capital side, that increase went up, let's see, the current expense went up 6.8%. On the capital funding, that's going up 10.8%. Let's talk about the school enrollment. I'm one that's been following that and I asked for an update and the updated numbers for October of 2023 showed that they actually had increased by roughly 100. So we do see a plateau on that. So we need to correct, the public needs to understand that that's not going down and I'm the one that asked for that and any commissioner can ask questions and ask for the information. Let's talk about these outside agencies and we just giving money away. I've sat here during budget discussions for eight years, this is my ninth one. We have been doing the same thing over and over again for the seven municipalities as it relates to recreation, same thing. So this time, we're going to try to do something a little better and in this budget, there's $15,000 in there for Bath, Bell Haven and Chalkwendy. They have very similar sports programs, roughly affect about 250 kids. In addition to that, we're doing $500,000 to Pantega, Aurora and Washington Park as it relates to their parks or recreation, swing sets, whatever.
500.
5,000, did I say 500? I'm sorry. And we increased the amount to 25,000 for the city of Washington. And, you know, I think the total increase is like 29 or 30,000. We got a letter that our cost for one juvenile, if we lock one up, the county has to pay, if they're in there for 12 months, you know what our cost is? $54,000 for that one. You know, when you talk about backroom deals, I get really upset about that because, you know, everybody on here has a chance to talk to each other and ask what their passion is and, you know, I'm not going to ask somebody that says, cut, cut, cut every year and votes for a budget, no, no, no every year. I'm not going to ask that. So, I mean, my responsibility, I want the public to understand, I do consulting work, so I charge by the hour, so I had to keep up with my time. I've got 34 hours prior to this meeting night in this budget, 34 hours. And I'm not bragging, I'm just telling you, I don't take it very lightly. This is the most important thing that an elected official... This is the most important thing that an elected official can do. And I've been at every one of the meetings. I didn't cop out. I was here at every meeting. I didn't have an excuse to absence. So I'm going to support the budget because it's the right thing to do for Beaufort County. So Brian, do you have, are you guys update, updated?
Yes, sir. So Anita and her staff have taken care of updating that. We apologize for that miss. So if I will direct your attention to the budget amendment request that we gave you initially, and that would show BHM Library, Green Lamp, and then abhorrent taxes. If you will take that one and ball it up, throw it away, fold it in half, whatever you want to do with it, we are not using that one. So the new one that you have is budget amendment that reads BHM Library, Green Lamp, Abhorrent Taxes, and Boys and Girls Club. That's where we took the $60,000 out of the budget, just like we did for Green Lamp at 25 and BHM at 228,839. Those have been taken out. So that will allow Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Langley to be excused from those votes because they have to be, they can't vote on those appropriations. Then if you will take the big packet that is the budget ordinance and tear that front page off, and we gave you a new front page. And on that new front page, you will see that the original, on your old front page, it was 72,136,083. In the new one, we've taken $60,000 out of that, which is in the budget amendment. And then if you go down and look at Community Services, which was $1,731,410, that's where that $60,000 came out because Boys and Girls Club is considered a community service. So you see that reduction on the first page under Community Services. So if you will take that one off, attach this one in its place, you will now have the budget amendment that the entire board or the budget ordinance that the entire board is eligible to vote on. And then you can consider the budget amendment with the recusal of the members that need to recuse themselves from that.
I make a motion that we approve the budget amendment.
Budget ordinance.
Mr. Manager, to make the motion to approve the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
I'll second. Okay. Any further discussion on the corrected budget ordinance? Okay, all those in favor of it, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, now we ready to vote on the, on the budget amendment. All right.
Yes, sir. Now you would need to vote on the budget amendment and Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Langley. If you take these as a set, Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Langley will need to recuse themselves and officially do that with the clerk.
Point of order, is that on all of them or just the one the boards we sit on?
We grouped them together simply together. And if the board wants to take it as a full budget amendment like we've shown, then both of you would need to recuse yourself from that vote. And you have to do that officially with the clerk to say, I recuse myself in this vote.
I recuse myself.
Ms. Anne, Madam Clerk, please recuse me. Do we need a vote on that or are we good? You guys are entitled to stay in here or leave. You just can't say anything, right? Not supposed to say anything.
A motion to approve the budget amendment request.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor and a second discussion. All those in favor of the budget amendment as revised, which is the BHM Library, Green Lamp, and the Boys and Girls Club, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you.
Again, Ms. Chair, my apologies for missing Commissioner Booth on the Boys and Girls Club.
Now, are we, we did a motion or an adoption of the water and the solid waste?
That was actually included in the overall budget ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else that we need to cover? Thank you very much. Okay, now we're down to the public comments. And the first one is Stacy.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm not in time, so I'm not sure I keep going.
I'm timing it.
My name is Stacy Moore. I was raised in Beaufort County. As a woman and as a U.S. Navy veteran, I fought for freedom, equality, religion, and human rights. I'm here today to speak about House Bill 533, which was filed by North Carolina Representative Keith Kidwell. He is the primary sponsor. Representative Ben Moss, Representative Edward Goodwin, and Representative Kevin Crutchfield are all three co-sponsors on this bill. One question for you. Is there any law you can specify with regulation that tells a man what he can or cannot do with his body?
This is not a question and answer.
Okay, just going to throw that one out there. Just a few quick questions for the gentleman in the room. Since we do have politics and obstetrics and gynecology are all merging now, we have to make sure that all of our politicians understand. What is an ectopic? What is a fibrocystic? What is preeclampsia? What do you do when a woman has a heart condition at 18 weeks of pregnancy? These are questions that are on the minds of women. That's exactly right. My point is, when it comes to all of this, once a year, women have a torture chamber they have to go through. Every woman in the room, make a grade. There's three things we have to do. We go get ourselves mashed in a mammogram machine. We go and get intimate with a doctor. We go and have our blood drawn. All three of these on the trifecta, the most unholyest of trifectas that happens for us women. Now let me get behind that. Do you know the difference between a menstrual cramp and a hunger pain? Well, as women, we do. After 52 years, I do know my body and I do know what it wants, what it doesn't want. I do know what it's allergic to and what it's not allergic to. At 45, we have other things that come in, but unfortunately, men are claiming to know our bodies better than we do. This bill would effectively ban any and all abortions with exception to threat to the mother and spontaneous abortions, which we women normally call as spontaneous abortions miscarriages. So just let's clarify that for some people in the room as well. There will be no rape or incest exception on this new bill that is due to be signed off on at the end of the month. That's when the House bill is going to happen, on June 28. When that happens, not only do we have our 12-week ban when it comes to abortion, but now it really gets sticky. One result of this is in Tennessee last week, 32-year-old woman, high-risk pregnancy, goes to the doctor, goes to the ER. She's bleeding heavily. Doctor says, let's wait and see. A week later, this 32-year-old woman, because the doctors were scared to perform an abortion, 15-year threat going to them. The point of the matter is, excuse me, the point of the matter is, you're trying to say that abortion should not be legal for women in the state of North Carolina regarding rape and incest. If a woman goes out with friends on a Friday night and she's roofied, what happens to that woman after she's roofied? Now she finds out, nine weeks pregnant, nine weeks pregnant, she says, oh my God, how did this all happen? She remembers that moment. She remembers what happened. Now that person is on suicide watching the Navy. She goes on to have an abortion. Thank heavens, it was legal for her. She got the abortion, she got out, she's still a great lady, three children of her own. Next step comes in, we have a father who rapes his 14-year-old daughter, the 14-year-old gets pregnant, guess what happens? Mom says, she's keeping it, she misbehaved. Now we have an issue. Then child finally confesses to mom that this is what's been happening.
You have 30 more seconds. I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Anyway, getting down to the point of all of this, is I proposing orders to abide by basic tenement of our state, equal representation. I do not see one woman sitting on this panel. There are only 25% in our state legislature. How is that equal representation for women who know their bodies better than you do? When it comes down to it, gentlemen, go home and speak to the ladies in your life. Ask them what they would do. Ask them what they think. Because this is too much. It's too much for any woman to have to bear it and to have to lose the right to be able to even have a child because someone else was scared of a law.
Time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is legislative updates, and I don't see Senator Perry or Representative -- I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Robert. Robert, it's your turn.
Thank you very much.
I apologize.
That's all right.
I mean, he's a former commissioner. I don't know why I did that.
I got a rhetorical question for you tonight, gentlemen, because I said I can't ask the questions. First, how's your health? Whether it's good or whether it's bad, everybody on this board knows what their health is. And it's because you have access to health care. The Board of Health got a item, it's called the State of the County's Health, given to us at the last meeting. And folks, there's a lot of people in Beaufort County that don't know what the status of their health is. People are dying prematurely in Beaufort County every day. And if you will look at the sheet that I gave to you, the bottom half of the sheet, Beaufort County, 10 items down here, and Beaufort County is below the state average in every single one. But I want you to focus on the one that is second from the bottom, primary hypertension. Beaufort County deaths per 100,000 people, 19.15. The rate of deaths in North Carolina, 9.6, more than twice the state average. Also, look at diabetes. Beaufort County, not twice the state average, but approaching. And then you look at Beaufort County at the top, and you look at our education levels and our income levels, and that feeds in to what we're seeing at the bottom here. And I am asking you, as the seven most powerful people in Beaufort County, and I know this for a fact, I sat on that board, I know who's powerful in this county, I want you to team with the Health Department and get behind a task force to do something about this. This thing just hit me in the gut when I saw it. It's just, it's just a terrible, terrible statistic for Beaufort County. And the thing that we need to do, folks, is protect our citizens. These are the people that vote for you. These are the people that pay the taxes. These are the people that do, and yet they're dying at alarming rates, and they need, we need to try to do something about it. I don't care whether it's lack of education, I don't care whether it's poverty, I don't care whether it's apathy, I don't care whether it's ignorance. We need to do something about it. And I would ask that you team form this task force and get behind this task force and get all the agencies together and take a look at this problem. And I hope you'll do it, and I hope you'll do it for the citizens of Beaufort County. Because I know that it's important and that people shouldn't be dying when they shouldn't, when they don't have to. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Robert. I apologize again.
That's all right.
Okay, we're down to items for consent. Is there any items that you would like to pull for discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the items for consent, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, we're down now to items for decision, emergency services. Chris? Welcome.
I believe our, is it our animal control that's first on the list?
Yes, it is.
So coming before you today with the request to change the name of Animal Control to Animal Services. So really, what we're looking on that is just the perception the county has to the term animal control. And unfortunately, for most people, that's a negative thing. It's almost like the villain of the story. And we experience that a lot in our interactions with the public. And we would like the opportunity to rebrand that and take another approach at maybe changing that perspective from the community. The truth is, these officers are doing a lot beyond just what was traditionally known as animal control and doing some really good things in the public, some really good things to promote responsible pet ownership. And we would like the name of the office to reflect the good work instead of being focused on the negative that comes with the term animal control. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions, comments, concerns you may have.
Any questions of Chris? Yes.
With the name change, do you have an idea of how much this will cost as far as literature and signage?
So the signage on the building itself is probably, probably be the most expensive. And that's just the name plate on top, so we're expecting that to be minimal. Beyond that, we're looking about $100 per vehicle. And then the next time we order uniforms, we'd be changing the logo on the uniforms. Aside from those things, those are the only print or published changes that we can think of. And a lot of that could be done over time, especially with some of our handouts. Those are things we normally print as needed, so not expecting that to be a costly thing and not expecting that to incur costs that we can accommodate in our budget through attrition over the next year.
Yes, Ed.
You want to change from animal control to animal services?
Yes, sir.
You're changing it on your shirts and the cars. What are you doing to change the people where they're thinking? That's where the change, I think, that's where the change should be, not on your shirt and the cars.
You're right, and that's a cultural thing. And that's a cultural change that can only be done over time. We can't throw money at it. It's very much that exchange with the community. I think our employees are certainly doing that already. But for some people, just that name, animal control, when they see that, that's a negative vibe. How do we change that? It's time and experience. And I'll be truthful with you, will it work? I don't know. What we would like is the opportunity to try that, and we think we can do that at a very low cost.
Thank you. Other questions?
I just got one statement.
Yes, sir.
I have a problem with the whole word services. I mean, from a semantic standpoint, I get what you're trying to go with it, that you're serving the community. But say an animal, modifying it with services means you're, it almost sounds like you're serving the animal. And a lot of the things you guys do is a service to the animal. But when the public sees you put down an animal, which is not your fault, but it is a condition of your job, they're going to think that's somewhat of a great deal of irony. So what, I don't know, is there a better word than services? I think we can come up with one if we thought about it.
You know, we've kicked that around a lot and struggled to find a word that would carry it past that, that would put checks in the boxes that you are addressing any better than what services would. So again, you know, the challenge is, we fully recognize by simply changing the name may or may not affect that cultural change that we're looking for in that perspective. We just want to try it. And it certainly, we certainly can't, we don't think it would be a detriment beyond what we're already doing. So let's take a stab at it and try something new. And that's where we are with that. Yes, sir.
Yes, make a motion to approve. Got a motion, is there a, motion now and second. Anyone else before we take a vote? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those, well, everybody unanimous. Okay, Chris, you want to go to the next item?
Yes, sir. And unfortunately, we're going to call an audible here. I know we came to you guys with some remount options for EMET 6. The truth is, this rebid process has been sloppy. We didn't have a bid that complied in full with all of the bid specs we had. The submissions that we put before you, the first one, Emergency Transport Associates, we had some follow-up questions on them. One of the requirements of our bid spec was for them to provide us a copy of their North Carolina dealer's license. In follow-up to that, in literally this afternoon at about 4:45, we got a response back from that particular vendor, they are not licensed in North Carolina. They're licensed in South Carolina. They sail to counties in North Carolina. So there was just that absence of information there. The second proposal -- The second proposal we had before you from Atlantic, they initially, their initial submission was well beyond the specs that we put in our bid process. They were on-site or present for the bid opening, and during that, we had that conversation, hey, you guys overshot the mark here. Their resubmission, with their resubmission, they had the benefit of knowing what the other bid was. So the third thing that came up in this process, we, was we have found some unique information about this truck. This was a truck that we acquired from Bath Community Building. It has still in effect a lifetime warranty for that box, but it's proprietary to that particular vendor, meaning if another manufacturer or vendor works on that box, it would void it. So these are all just things that, that made a lot of mud in the water. And with all that given, what, what we would like to do is just scratch all of these bids. Let's re-approach this and try to get some consistency in our bids and our bid process. That way, we can present to you with hopefully some, some better clarity than what we have so far. And in our apologies for doing this at the last minute, we've been trying to, to make this happen on this deadline, the truth is, we just couldn't pull it out in a manner that's transparent in the way we like to do business. So with that, we would like your permission to redirect this to a rebid process, if that's okay with you. Be happy to take any questions, thoughts you might have.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Just, just to bring me up to date on what's going on. We're redoing this box so we can provide the additional services on the south side of the river?
No, sir.
We're not?
No, sir.
This is a backup box?
This, so this right now, the truck that's damaged was a front-line truck. This was our primary truck for the bath. And as you recall, this was an older truck, it's got some age and mileage on it, has a significant deer strike, just looking at that return on investment. We're going to put money into fixing this truck, let's get some longevity out of it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
John?
Chris, I want to congratulate you for taking this approach and stepping up to the plate on that. Because, you know, you're following the rules now, you're caught in a squeeze, and we're, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next item is the Sheriff's Office, 911 Center. Victoria? You doing okay?
I'm hanging in there. Can you see me? I heard it was a charge to lower it, so I want to, I want to see if.
We'll give you a face. You, we'll wave yours. If your phone goes off, it will.
Tonight, we're just seeking approval for a, some microwave system repairs for two of our towers. During, we had preventative maintenance checks on all of our tower sites, and it was found during those checks that two of our tower sites needed microwave system repairs due to weather damage and some other things. So we're seeking those to be made. Currently, we're working on backup equipment until those repairs are made. We're not seeking additional funds, this is just simply seeking your approval to reallocate existing funds towards those repairs.
Okay, got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Anybody have a question?
I just got one.
Yes.
I told you last week, I'm not here to micromanage your office, and I, and I promise you, I'm not going to do that. Where are you reallocating funds from?
It's in your, I think you have.
Send it to the public.
I'm sorry?
Send it to the public.
Um, so, let's see, if you'll, the budget amendment that we went and pulled from, it's from several different lines. Is that what your, what your question is?
Yeah, it's on page 164.
It's already in your budget?
Yes, sir, it's already in the budget, we're just moving the funds to different lines to reallocate this.
Did the, did those two towers go down?
No, sir.
Okay, so they were just operating?
They're not down, they're just, the main equipment, there is issues to the main equipment, so they're now operating on the backup equipment that's already there. And those were caught during the preventative maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. Any, any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. Okay, this is 6:45, and Katie, we're at 6:44. How'd you do that? You want to wait a minute, Wes, or you want to come on up? Thank you for being here, so we can go ahead and do it.
Yes, sir, mine still says 6:44, so I'll keep going. Tonight, just wanted to give you all a brief update on where we stand on the solid waste ordinance. As you're aware, we just, we presented a draft during the May Commissioners' meeting, and after that, because of the mistake of it not being included in the agenda, we allowed some time for each of you all to review that. Couple of weeks was given. Minor changes have been made based upon some of the comments received from some of the Commissioners. And in that time, we've also been working closely with the Tax Assessor and the County Attorney to make some further revisions and refine the document. It was our intent to hopefully have a penalty section ready for this meeting. However, upon meeting with the County Attorney, the recommendation was given to get with the UNC School of Government for further clarification and assistance in developing an appropriate penalty section of the ordinance. This is due to changes in statutes and some case law that has happened recently, and just some unfamiliarity with some of those changes. So trying to get with people who do this daily, they have more experience with it, so that we can make sure we're getting this right from, from that, and not having to make changes a year or two down the road. So it is, it is our anticipation to present a final draft at next month's meeting, which will include everything from the title down to the penalties and enforcement, everything. I'll be happy to, or will be happy to answer any questions that you all have, but just wanted to give you an update that it is still on our front burner, so.
Okay, floor's open if anybody has a question.
Will you be incorporating the three items into the discussion next month? The three items that we asked you to hold off on?
Are you speaking of the junk vehicles? Oh, the, the budget request items?
Yes.
Um, they're, I mean, they'll be discussed, but it won't be like a additional request for money, I don't believe.
Okay, so they won't be part of the ordinance?
Some of the language in the ordinance would address some of those items.
Okay.
I have several questions.
Yes.
All right. Number one, does this ordinance, as it's written, allow the county to clean up a nuisance piece of property and put a lien on the property?
I don't believe that in its current form that we have done that yet.
Okay, my opinion is, we should do that. This thing doesn't have any teeth in it like it is.
Which some of that would be included in our penalty section, which we have not brought forward yet as well.
Well, there's a question of procedure here, and that is, how do you declare a piece of property a nuisance? And, you know, then you appropriate money for that, and then there's certain legal things that have to be done to put a lien on it. So have you consult, you need to consult with the County Attorney, you know, and, and what I'm going to do right now to make sure that this is in there, is to make a motion that that be included in this ordinance.
Are you specifically saying putting a lien on it, you want to make sure that's in?
I want to make, I want to make sure, yeah, I want to make sure that we have the authority to do that.
Well, you currently do not have that authority, and I don't think just on, on the county ordinance you can do that.
Well, that's why I'm raising this question.
Well, that's why I'm saying to you that, that this is, this is not like if you are a surveyor doing work for somebody as you, as you can. You have a state law that gives you a lien.
That's a mechanic's lien.
Okay. This is not what we're talking about here under current law. It's also why we're going to talk to the folks in Raleigh about what can we, how far can we go to add this, there'd be room nicely if we could do that.
So we're going to have.
It's not the law like that.
We're going to have that, well, the law says that we have the right to regulate illegal disposal of solid waste, including littering on public and private property, provided for enforcement by civil penalties as well as other remedies. That's in the law right now. We have the right to provide that regulations may be enforced by county employees for this. And that's what I'm talking about, that's General Statute 153A-136, Part CA. And, you know, I don't want to keep waltzing around this, because this is, this is one of those things that we keep bringing it up, and nothing ever happens on it, and that's why I made a motion. I need a second to include this in the ordinance.
Oh, second.
Pardon?
She's got to do a little work.
Well, I, I, I think we've got to determine if it's, if we, if it's legal, if it's ever been tested, or is that what, aren't you going to the school of government to raise some additional questions?
Exactly what we're talking about.
Well, I can't make a motion to include something in here that's illegal, so the motion would still stand. If you come back and say that it's illegal, then, you know, that, that takes care of the motion. But the motion is to include this in the ordinance. At this point, if you want to change, me to change the motion to say something like, to examine the issue and bring it back to the Commissioners, I don't mind changing my motion to do that. But I, I don't want to do what usually happens on a lot of these things, when Hood sits up here and asks for something, and everybody nods, and then they come back and say, well, you never voted on that, so we just ignored you. I don't want to be ignored.
I will amend my second.
Well, let me, let me ask a question. Are, are you talking about putting a lien on a piece of property that's near one of our sites that the public has thrown trash on, and we now want the landowner to clean that up, and we're going to put a lien on it? Is that?
Yeah, I'm talking, what I'm talking about is anywhere in the county that you have that situation. See, the procedural thing is, I don't want a county employee to be empowered to just go out and say, buddy, you're in trouble because of this. There has to be a procedure that goes with this that protects the public and protects the county. That's why I'm raising this issue. That can't be done without the approval of the Commissioners, simply because it is a legal matter, and it involves the county's business, so it has to come to the Commissioners for that to happen. So I'm asking that we investigate how to do this, and you present to us how to do it, if it's possible, get advice from wherever you can get it from.
That's what you say, you know what you're doing.
We've had some initial conversations.
That's what you're doing. You find one out.
Well, I think Hood just wants to make sure that it is what's in our record.
My question is this. I mean, you could go all over this county, and I, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Richardson, but the question I want you to ask, since we're doing the government, is do this, do this also mean a county that has county-wide zoning? I mean, you can go on every street in Beaufort County and find a nuisance. And, and, I mean, there's, there's one right up the street here. Every county got a nuisance. But, but the thing I want to note, can you just go and put a lien on somebody's property, even though we don't have county zoning and stuff like that? That's all I want to know.
I just want to be sure that the public is not abused in this process, that whatever we do is a legitimately really bad, terrible thing. I don't want, you know, I don't want to get into cleaning up the county. But I do want the power, in the case of some of these egregious things where people are not responding at all to a request, that the county have the ability to enforce the dumping of trash and garbage, and that's what, that's what this ordinance is about. So my motion is on the floor, call a question.
Any, any other comment? All right, those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed.
Okay.
All right.
I appreciate the comments, that's what we've been asking for all along, is what would you all like to see included in this? That helps us as we're making our next steps and trying to figure out what to present to you in a final draft, so. Appreciate the comments, and any, any other questions?
Oh, yeah, I have several more.
Okay.
I'm just rolling.
Bring, bring them on.
We, we talked about the last time this came before us, that we would have something in, in this comprehensive ordinance about the disposal of mobile homes, boats, and really junked autos, if you want to get into that.
Yes, those are in the works.
They're in the works, you're working on that. All right, so we're going to have a report on that when you come back. And again, I'm not interested in being oppressive, because the first thing that happens when you pass these kinds of ordinances is, the neighbor goes after the neighbor, and all of a sudden, you're going to start off with 50 complaints. And, and we don't want to get into that unless it's a genuine egregious issue. And there have been some. I've been involved in not just this one, I've been involved in a bunch more. All right, still going through this. Okay, on page 14, 176 in the Commissioner's Book, the first sentence, I have a problem with the wording on, number 12, under the yellow, says, "No person, solid waste collector or company shall dump or deposit waste into the county-owned collections." And I looked under the definitions of waste in the ordinance, and waste is not defined in the ordinance. There's a, there's a lot of waste that has an adjective in front of it, but there's no waste that, uh...
Can I get your location again? I'm not matching up.
Okay, go to page 14 of your copy.
What I'm showing is 182.
Okay, it's page eight, it's page eight. It's page eight, oh, excuse me, it's page eight of 14. I was looking at the second number. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I was, I was then looking for highlights.
I can understand why you're having a problem. It's page eight. The very first sentence at the top, "Shall dump or deposit waste." You know, you know, beauty is in the eye of the holder. What's junk to me is somebody else's, you know, big deal. So we, I think we need to define waste, we need some definition in that paragraph to make sure that we don't get trapped. Well, is it, is solid waste, is that not?
We've got some options already built in there, so we'll have to look and see what's best for that, or if we need to include a new term.
Yeah, I think, I think you need some definition of what is waste, because again, I don't want to see people take this ordinance when it's passed out and abuse their neighbor with it. And that's what happens on all of these things. You know, Commissioner Booth mentioned zoning. The first thing that happens when a county zones is you have about 20 lawsuits in the first year. And the reason is because one neighbor's going after another neighbor, and they're using the zoning ordinance to do it. And we don't want to do that. We don't want to abuse our neighbor or abuse our citizens. On page, and I'm getting the page right this time, 13, up at the top of that, the first sentence up there that's not highlighted, it's the top of the page, "It shall be unlawful for any person to dump solid waste at a landfill except in areas designated by the landfill operator's own duty." Is landfill the right word? We don't have a landfill in Beaufort County.
We'll have to go back and review that further.
Yeah, that part's talking about landfill. I think you need to look at the words on there, and...
Which?
That's page 13.
With something, and something like that, we need to find an all-inclusive term.
Yes, yes.
Because, I know y'all probably have some say in this, but who's to say 10 years from now, somebody doesn't want to put a landfill here, so.
Yeah, and you can have a separate paragraph that addresses a landfill in Beaufort County, but you've got to follow the state law with that, so we really don't need anything in here, because there's upteen state laws on landfills, and on qualifying landfills, and... Okay, and then, paragraph D on that same page, which is right below the yellow, says, "If any solid waste disposed of in violation of this article can be identified as having last belonged to," says, "If any solid waste disposed of in violation of this article." I think we should include after article at any location in the county, because the rest of the paragraph goes on to talk about county sites. And I think we need to be more inclusive, because finding a bag of trash in the woods somewhere, if it belongs, if it can be identified, then we need to be calling that person to come and get it. We don't need to be cleaning it up ourselves. And that's all I have. Anyone else have any comments? If not, thank you. Wes?
Thank you. Good evening.
All right, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and take a break since...
I messed it up, didn't I?
Yeah, but that, I mean, that's fine, that's fine. You started a minute early.
You got four more minutes, come on back up here and say something.
Yeah, okay, we're going, we're going, we're going to take a break, and we'll come back with Brad. We're back. Brad, Economic Development Advisory Committee bylaws read-
Brad, Economic Development Advisory Committee Bylaws Revision and Adoption. So turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Waters, and thank you, members of the commission. We, this board had been in place for many years and my predecessor had used. And during COVID, attendance had waned and the meetings got a little long. And so when I got on board, it was definitely imparted on me that we needed a body such as this to advise me and my work in economic development, but also to serve as a first step and a board to review activity before we take it to the commissioners. And so we went about revising these bylaws to reflect the current work state of the office of the Economic Development for the county. And we put together, didn't do a lot of revisions, but took out some things and added some things to focus our efforts and with the main objectives being to encourage the expansion, location, and relocation of industrial parks and facilities, to nurture existing businesses in their efforts to compete, export, and expand, work with the appropriate organizations to attract and expand tourism, accommodation, destination facilities, retail, restaurants, and small businesses, developing and promoting public or private industrial infrastructure, parks, and facilities, and to network with agencies and consultants to support economic development. Also, to promote the general economic environment, to ensure the economic well-being and competitiveness of Beaufort County and its municipalities. And so we went to revise that committee's membership and we have, are proposing to include two members of the Beaufort County Commissioners, the president or representative of Beaufort County Community College, superintendent or representative of Beaufort County Schools, both of those being prime workforce development agencies, the president or representative of the Beaufort County Committee of 100, the executive director or representative of the Mideast Commission, a representative of the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, and a representative of the agriculture and aquaculture sector. We also made sure to include representation from each of the municipalities in Beaufort County that include Washington, Bellhaven, Chalkwinnity, Pantigo, Bath, Washington Park, and Aurora. And that will bring membership to a total of 15. So you have a review of that and I'll have to answer any questions you may have about the bylaws.
Questions of Brad as it relates to the revised bylaws. Entertained a motion to approve? Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the bylaws as written, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Brad. We're down to the manager's office and the first one is Rice Creek Phase III Contract Administration. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Page 188, you have, so as you recall, at a regular meeting on March 6th of this year, the board approved a contract with the North Carolina Division of Coastal Management for the access grant, which would finish the final phase of Rice Creek. And you also adopted that project ordinance. So we have a contract that's attached for the Mideast Commission to administer that grant. Funding for that administration is including, is included in the project ordinance and from the grant itself. So there's no additional county funds needed and we would recommend your approval.
Got a motion and a second. Questions, comments? If not, all those in favor of the contract or the agreement with Mideast, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. We're down to Agape Health Services for the jail health. Brian?
Yes, sir. So at your table, you have a couple of items that I gave to you. We were working with Agape on jail health services. They had sent us their professional services agreement draft last week in consultation with the health director. We put together a general scope of work that we were looking for. That's included. And you also have their, Agape's budget that they're proposing, 379, 324. There is funding in the budget that you passed for jail health. I just did not get a final revised agreement back from Agape. I sent this one to them on Friday and asked them if they could to try to get it back to me today so I could bring it to you. They were not able to meet that deadline, but I've provided you everything that we have. So that's their general, this is their general services agreement or their professional services agreement, the scope of work that we've defined for jail health, and then you have their budget. So what I would ask you is if you would give us the grace to be able to complete this and execute that with the board's approval. We're not going, you have the budget. It's 379, 324 for a 12-month contract. Pharmacy is going to be done separately like we do it now. So that is, that's a reimbursable basis because they have a federal pharmacy program. So we'll simply reimburse off that. But that would be our request because we're trying to get this in play by July 1. I can certainly, I'm happy to bring it back to you final. We would have to do a date back to July 1 or with the board's consent, we can take, because this is exactly, this is what we have. We just don't have it in a final form yet. So I'm happy to do it either way, but we just need to get something in place by July 1. Sir?
Did July, go ahead and get it done. We've got to get it done, so just do it.
Well, I mean, that's what I was hoping the board would agree, that you would allow me to move forward with this with the county attorney and make sure that we have everything. Like I say, you've got their professional services agreement that we'll just enter this into. You've got our general scope of work and you've got the budget. So we have all the pieces. We just don't have it in its final form. And I'd ask that the board approve us moving forward with that, working with the county attorney to finalize that and execute that.
You need a consent or you need a motion?
I would need a motion for that because it's a contract.
Make a motion that would give the manager the authority to follow through on this contract so it can get it done by July 1st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Comments? John?
David, do you see any problems with this as it's written now?
There could always be problems, but I don't see any right now. I think if you all approve it, then it should be okay.
It's within the budget that we approve. Okay? Any other comment? All those in favor of the agreement? And any potential change, that minor changes that may come up that, so we can have this done by July the 1st? Raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay.
So we're a 5-2?
5-2. Okay, Katie, you're next with the voting delegate for the annual NACO conference.
Yes, sir. Next month, a group of you will be going to Texas for the annual NACO conference and they're requesting a delegate and an alternate be chosen for the business meeting.
Are you going to be there? Okay, Jerry and I both will be there, but I guess we need a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, we're down to Commissioner Richardson.
All right, the first item that I have here is TV services. You know, back when we had, what was the name of that outfit? Sudden Link? They were providing terrible services to the county. And then they changed their name under the guise of, hey, there's a new name out there that will get better services. I told the guy who was at one of the conventions that I went to, had a little table sitting over there, and I said, who are you? We need better services in Beaufort County. I'm bad at hearing. How do we talk to you? Well, it turns out they were Sudden Link. They had just changed their name.
We need to go back to the, I think, didn't we go to the Attorney General? Wasn't he running something? We need to go back and petition the Attorney General about these services because they're still not good. And I move that we do that. I move that we approach the Attorney General with the petition that he do whatever he needs to do to improve services.
In the expansion, in the broadband expansion, they came in with a bid, but we refused to support them.
Yeah, yeah. All right, that's a motion. Second. Okay. We got a motion and a second. The manager's just going to petition him that services are poor in the county and what can you do?
So I'm assuming you would want us to send that somewhere? I think we sent a letter before to the attorney general's office. They're just going to resend that same.
Yeah. Okay, we're down to Beaufort County Schools. Oh, yeah, you got me. Oh, I'm sorry. You got... Oh, I thought we, didn't we? No, I'm sorry. Make a motion. Make the motion. Motion's made. All right, now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Commissioner Richardson, Beaufort County Schools. Meeting with school board on improving test scores. Back when we were working on the budget and with all of this clarity that you guys keep talking about and any commissioner can ask and he'll get what he wants. And we had the strategic planning people that were in here and we decided that we were going to have a meeting with the school board during the budget so that we could talk about these terrible scores in these schools and ask the school board what we could do to help them improve those. And we had some ideas at that time. I'm not giving up on this. I still, you guys have avoided doing this through the whole budget process. School board's never been in front of us, so how do we know what they're doing? Answer is we don't. So I'm requesting a meeting with the school board and the commissioners to discuss what the commissioners can do to help the school board improve the scores in these terrible schools. That's a motion.
Okay, just to bring you up to date, we did, the county manager and myself and Ed Booth met with the chairman and vice chair as well as the superintendent. And we asked them and they agreed to come back with a date where we would have a joint meeting between both boards. So Brian, as far as I know, you heard anything back from the superintendent?
No, but I'd be glad to reach back out to him and see if they have a good day.
And I got additional. Concerning the test score, I think they're waiting to get back the scores from the state, state certified. And I will bet you, I don't know, I do not know, this is my opinion, but I bet you that we're going to be pleasantly surprised with the scores. But we'll see.
Okay, I have a problem with the scores because the scores have always been rigged. We got the same problems. They have been. We've got the same problems in the schools whether the scores are good or bad. So that's not a reason not to meet with the school board. So my motion is still stands.
Well, we've got it. We, no, I mean, it's already... With to have a meeting, we're already agreed to that. We're just waiting on them to come back with a date.
So what happens to the motion in the second? If we've agreed, then you shouldn't have a problem voting for it.
Well, we shouldn't have to vote on it. That's what I'm saying. Why? Why?
Because there's avoidance in this whole issue of people have been waltzing around for three months trying to avoid this meeting.
Okay, all those in favor of the, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
So we're not going to meet with the school board?
No, 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 no. We made that clear. You just didn't listen.
I am listening. I'm listening very much.
We're still waiting on them to come back with a date.
Well, I'm going to ask you this then. What is the manager, Mr. Manager, what do you intend to do based upon the confused and delirious actions of this board?
He's already said that.
I plan on following up with the superintendent and asking if they have to come up with a meeting date.
Yeah, that's great. Follow up on it, okay? Future...
What does she have to do with us sitting up here? Yes, she's on the school board. I mean, you're not on the school board and I'm going to tell you where the back room is now. The back room is at King Chicken on Thursdays. That's where the back room is.
Well, two of you are sitting over there, your wives are on the school board. You can't tell me they don't influence your vote on this board.
Well, I tell you, what do we vote on this board? We only vote on is their budget and I'm going to vote for it long as kids in school.
And it's a lump sum and this board doesn't know where the money is.
And the only thing about it is you want to run the school board, run the county commissioners. As smart as you are, if you would learn the count, the seven up here, if you can't get four votes, then you just sit over there, you and your sidekick and shut up.
Okay. Just because some of you have terrible judgment doesn't mean that the rest of us do.
Your judgment is bad, Hood.
All right, all right. Have you got anything else on the schools?
Not on the schools, I don't.
Okay. All right. One of the things I would like to take up when we meet with the schools is what is the future of the Ed Tech Center? Because Ed Tech Center started off like 15 years ago with something that was only going to last a year or two until we could get control of the discipline in the schools. And it is still alive and it is still going and it is still providing special educational functions. So I would like to talk with them about what goes on at the Ed Tech Center? How do you get admitted to the Ed Tech Center? And how many students are you putting through there? And what part of our teaching staff is dedicated to this? Because it's supposed to be one teacher per so many students. And how much county money goes into the Ed Tech Center?
Katie, can you make a note? When we get ready to do the agenda, that these three items be included?
And I would invite you to their graduation, which is going to be June 15th, I think. No, 16th, 16th or 17th. Yeah, Saturday. And I'd invite you to all the graduations. I go to all of them because I videotape them. But there's some really good kids that are graduating and going to some good places, four-year college, military, some just going to business. And I'm really proud of them. And I think you should go to all the graduations like I do.
Well, there's two questions that go into this. Number one, are these students requiring special consideration at expense that the rest of the students in the school system don't have access to? And number two, do you get paid for video in those sessions?
I absolutely do.
See, all right, I think we've answered a lot of questions.
I've been doing it for like 15 years now, so...
My next item has to do with the new construction of the school. The school board never voted to build a new school. I saw an ad in the newspaper, request for proposals to architects on building a new school. And the commissioners have no idea, nor does the public, of the function of a new school. We have a lot of questions to do with this and I want this included when we meet with the school board, is what is your justification for the new school? Where is it going to be? And what part of the student population is it going to serve? And do you have a comprehensive study that shows school needs in Beaufort County? And I would remind you to keep in mind that a casual examination of our schools in the county is that they're 50% full or 50% empty, whichever way you all look at it. So the question is, why do we need to build a new school at all? Why are we using our buildings and our facilities efficiently so that we can educate children? So I'd like that included when we meet with the school board. Do what?
Well, the agreement was is that we would do an agenda for the meeting. So Katie and their clerk will mesh all of it together and come up with the agenda.
The progress on this new school is that they've only met with architects who've pitched. So there's really no decisions have been made. But the school I think that's going to replace was a school that I went there first in 1960-something that was there, the Eastern Elementary. And I was the first class there and I'm 60-some painful years old today.
Painful. Well, you know, I'll say the same thing I said when we did the school bond before. The age of the school building doesn't have anything to do with the quality of the education. Because you can look at Beaufort County Schools, we've got a lot of new buildings and we've got terrible quality of education.
Well, I would take exception to the word terrible, number one. I'm not sure how you measure that. But I think, you know, Dr. Cheeseman covered with this board what was, what the plan was and what the decision, what they were trying to accomplish with building a new school. So I'm not sure where we missed all this. So maybe that was the one you were going.
Well, I'm sorry you were asleep.
I wasn't asleep. You weren't here.
No, that was a joint, that was a joint meeting. That came up during the joint meeting.
Okay, we're down to Commissioner comments. Anyone want two minutes or less?
Yeah, I want two minutes.
All right. We've just come through a terrible budgetary process. What you didn't hear, what these guys kept explaining was the fantastic job that they have done. What you did not hear was we took certain departments and certain line items and we looked at where the county money went in the school system and how many teachers there were in there and how the students were being served and how many were being served and what special education... and what special education was doing, and who was paying for that, and on, and on, and on. In other words, how your county money was used. You didn't hear that. What you heard was, they asked for money, and they got what they asked for, so we're really doing a great job, aren't we? Anybody else want their time? Okay, we got a motion to adjourn and a second. All of those in favor of adjournment, raise your right hand. Thank you.